Bruce James, Art Field Director. We're saying that we have a family emergency and why should we be here tonight? So I have the pleasure of chairing meetings tonight. When I get to present a meeting and conference agenda being first in St. County Children's Free Elders July 18, 2017, we're doing this in Pompan湖ton Lake tonight. A pleasure to go to Pompan湖ton Lake. Bruce, want to do it all, please?
Free elders out there, Hartlet, here. Bass, Duffy, here. LaFleur, here. Deputy Director James, here.
And the first thing we do is present a conference agenda. I'm going to turn this over to our Administrator, Anthony Genova, who will get us through this agenda.
Sure, it's the next one? I thought it is. And we'd like to invite you up and say some welcoming remarks, and then I think we have some gifts we put there, gifts.
Well, I love gifts.
It's all frankincense and myrrh. That works.
I thank you all about your coming down to town. You know, I feel it's an honor for Pompan湖ton Lake for you guys to come down, hear our residents, hear what they have to say. I'm sure our town is a little quiet, you know, so I'm sure they'll have some little comments to give to you. So Anna, thank you a lot.
Sure. May I have one of you stand up there and we'll present to them. We have one here this evening, our historic site poster, the Morris Canal poster that I believe for you, I hope that you can hang it in the municipal building.
Yeah, very nice, thank you.
We are in the process of working on the Morris Canal. We're in the process of working on the Morris Canal and bringing that walkway and bike and transport. I should know if there's a grant.
Well, you'll see that we have so much historic sites. There's one that's going to be added to this in Gertown, which is the Ryerson, no, correct, it's going to be redone as part of our open space grant this year. It's very historic preservation and disrepair, we're going to correct it. So it's a treasure across St. County, one of the national historic sites. Jersey's been living up to it. We're very happy about that.
You know, that's a great period because that's where we used to now.
It did. And we've already restored, so that's part of our open space grant this year. They applied for it. We have a woman who does art historic sites. She's actually a diemantial, you know, we've redone that. So we're going to redo this because it's part of our history and it's part of St. County's proud and continuing.
Yeah, that's great.
So we're really happy about it. Do you have any questions?
Well, actually, we're going to redo the Christian, you know, that's a historic site. It goes back like over a hundred years.
Oh, Lord.
So I know the church is very concerned about that. So we're glad you could come out for the year.
Yeah, well, they have the right to be based on open historic preservation. We don't want to dilute our business and churches as we can. This we can because this is our, it's under registry. So these days are our, our period and we're really kind of thrilled about it. And we have St. County, we're lucky because we're part of the revolution. We have many historic sites and we are blessed with all those historic sites. So our goal is to make sure that all of them that can be preserved, are preserved because that's our history and constitution. We have everything to us. Free elders got into long, had to recover a little.
All right, thanks for everything.
I know with this guy, it's kind of, I'm thinking, I'm not a Ross.
I'm going to spend two.
Okay. I'm sorry, what's your name?
Emma.
An examiner.
Yeah. I've gotten many letters from you.
Yes.
We had a meeting with Mayor earlier and I thank you for your hospitality. We did work with you, so I just appreciate it. We have the whole board, so thank you. I don't know if this guy has seen you.
Eric, I don't know if any of your council members here have been able to.
What are your council members? We stand up. This is Council Ben.
Thank you again for your hospitality and having us here this evening. Next, we would have the review of the consent agenda.
Okay. Just so you know, by law, we can't actually meet until six o'clock. So Tony's going to sing a few bars and have a word apparently. He can dance very well. I don't care how many dollars he's going to be here for. We do want to have a review of the consent agenda, K1, K2, L, C2, 3. Anybody have, have you reviewed it all? If you have any questions at all, any of your resolutions that are on the agenda? Free elders. No. Can we pass?
Director, who you? We have two late starters and one amendment. The first, first resolution is a resolution authorizing spending turnaround of $95.60 in corridor enhancement funds for purchase and installation of two fronts of plaques when we brought out. It's a, it's a late starter. It's a grant for the veterans at the memorial, two plaques on the fly. The veterans on the memorial. The other one is a resolution authorizing spending fuel for divisional utilization based on the bid. And this was received by, by Eric didn't make, didn't make great agenda, but did and need to do work tonight. And what we would request is to notice under agenda, they, there are two listings of the amendments to the open space across the county, so 14 and 18. And what we're asking is that 14 be removed and 18, 18 be amended because the caption that's, that's why. So what we're, what we're requesting is to replace, this is just a nasty one, 14, 14 held, 14 being removed, 18 being amended, 14 being rescued, 17 being restored, 14 restored and processed. Prove by resolution of 18, you know, to a community, to a county.
Sorry, 18 is just a substitute.
Yes.
Just supposed to be that's why. Any questions on that?
I want to know, Senator, Jake, Jake, I just want to ask five questions. At the regular meeting, I'm going to have to have you hold it. And that revolution would have just assaulted.
Well, we expect that we'll have to, we'll have to, we're here, we're here. If you're, if you're, if you're out.
All right, well, that, if there's one, I just want to mention.
Well, we can't start until six o'clock. Because we have some time, you know, we can actually start. For, 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 if you're here, we're going to do it because we have some time, you know, we can actually start. We've got things for, 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 if you'd like. If you're here, we have every few, but the single thing that we're.
I used to, I used to live in Stephane, years and years ago.
You kicked it out.
I was a city, I was a city carer. I mean, you used to own a bar and behind the diner, Backstreet Saloon, some bowling pit down the street in Green Hill, kind of cool. It was a great time, it was a great time. We kind of, we only had Chorma first and then we had Ryan and we had Boobout, which we get bigger and bigger till Wes Mop. We'll see the pump next year or whatever. It was a great time and still, you know, look forward to it. I miss Wes like everyone else, you know, with so much spirit. Always good, fond memories.
If anybody, if anybody was ever beat up, it was more, I don't know. I would look in, we have like a drive to your people.
Yeah.
I'm not going to go.
I'm going to be here.
I got you back there.
It was nice to be back. Nice to have you out of the circle.
Are we going in, are we going in order or by distance from where we're sitting right now? Because then I go next. Well, I'm just going to go down rather than go to you before. I live right down the road in Wayne. By road, right down the road, I mean just take Henry Turnpike down a couple miles and you visit my house right past the Starbucks. They have a Starbucks, not the pro Starbucks. But me living in Wayne and spending a lot of time in this part of the county, it's a great pleasure to be here tonight. We are really making efforts to invest in this part of the St. County. You see that in the example that we, that, you know, Jane gave earlier of our historic investment in the preservation of the church, but also in the fact that, for example, the St. County Community College right down the road from Montague. That campus now has every course of studying its community college offer. You know, words, you don't have Patterson, you don't have St. or other campuses in order to study, whatever course of study the community college is offering is available right next door in Montague. That's part of what we're trying to do, to see if that every corner of the St. County is getting the investments and services, road repair, bridge, coal repair, but also those education opportunities and other access. We've got a lot of our team here with us today that often in economic development who I know is forever working to help small businesses find locations and find funding and find ways to expand and locate right here in the St. County and the whole rest of our team. And I know that they are always available with resources to all of you as elected officials and all the citizens in St. County and as am I.
Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be here at Pompan湖ton Lake, so I'm a free holder out there. A couple of things I wanted to touch on as far as what the county impact is to Pompan湖ton Lake, some of the projects that we have started or in the process of construction, constructing in terms of the bridges. You have the Colfax Avenue, a bridge project, which is trying to be completed this year finally. A new design, you have Lakeside Avenue, Culver, Lakeside Avenue Bridge, both under design. Culver costs about $517,000, the bridge is about $270,000. The Real Avenue, the construction cost is $105,000, that was completed in 2010. Capital Road Project, we had Lewis Highway and Amber Turnpike, Riverdale Avenue, Amber Turnpike to Riverdale, St. Avenue, Amber Turnpike to Montague River to James Turnpike. All these projects that I listed, roughly about a million and six, other projects have been completed. And there's a drainage project going on right now, Amber Turnpike, Montague River to James, included in the servicing project that was also completed in 2016. The community development block grant numbers since 2008, Pompan湖ton Lake has received $875,000 for a number of projects, including the library and a number of 88 curries, roughly in the town. Open space awards, there's been a number of open space awards over the past, well, since 2001, Pompan湖ton Lake has received $55,000, so very happy about that. Power Transit has completed almost 2,800 rides in January, November, and May, 17, and in the last 12 months, 5,750 deals of the delivery to meals on wheels. These are just some of the projects and programs that the county and Pompan湖ton Lake stretch each other with, and we're happy to provide that. Just a personal note, one thing I like about this month here, coming to Pompan湖ton Lake is their fair, around the lake itself, Pompan湖ton Lake, they excited about that, that's in the area. A few times, it's a warm, warm fair, but a good time had by all, and especially I hope the residents are warm, they're both, I rarely was a part of it, but I'm a part of it myself. Pompan湖ton Lake's most have a good time there, get great community. Glad to be here. Thank you.
My administrator said we have a little time to deal with. We really leave, we cannot start until six o'clock because after we advise. I will say that we really appreciate, we like taking the freeholdings on the road. So people in various areas of the public, very huge county, Westmoreburg, Little Falls, St., Wayne, Burton, just the big county area lines. So for us to take the county government meetings to various communities throughout the years, we head every single municipality, we are now in the process of creating, municipalities we think are great deserves to have the government come to them. These ones every couple of years where they can see what happens at county government meetings. Some people don't know where a freeholder is. We have brochures that explain what a freeholder is, what a freeholder does, where county tax dollars go. As you know, we had a zero increase in county tax dollars this year. That took years of planning and work to get done. I credit some of our professionals, particularly our county administrator, in getting to where we got to. It's about good government, and it's not a party, but good government is good government. And when you serve people of your constituency, you serve constituents well, and we hope that we do that, that's the reward itself. I don't think anybody who serves on a board that gives you their own day, or anybody who serves in a board position in the St. County, and I mean county or municipal, I don't mean state, they work for peanuts, it's really not a lot of money. So people who do this really are dedicated, they're making things better. We need to agree sometimes on what that is.
A lot.
Because I know a lot of different ways to pay a road, or do a bridge, or provide a service that somebody needs to, or to those on the hills or anything else in transacts, but a party looks at it, and it goes to what the team to do as government of the West Water Gimmie. I appreciate the response that we get from elected officials, but it doesn't matter if the county is, that you've been to, the response that we get, the greetings that we get from our fellow elected officials, who calls parties about happiness, but wonders. And it's enjoyable for us to do it because we get to hear from people that would make it happen, Patterson, all the time. So I appreciate Mayor, Council, I appreciate you having us here, finding out how we do this. It's exciting to me, I get to see people that I get normally some, Nathan Patterson, I do this all the time, we're pretty busy, a few of us that do this all the time, a lot of us do it part-time, they make full time hours. So this is a part of the, I really appreciate it. I have nothing left to say. You don't want to hear me say, you don't want to hear me say, you don't want to hear me say, you're a lot of stuff. We could do that, oh, very slow. I have a little change. Is that what you meant? We have nothing to say? Nothing? Okay. All right, so I'll take a motion to adjourn the conference agenda. Is that a motion? Say it.
Free elders, Hartlet, yes. Duffy, yes. Deputy Director James, yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, we will actually open the regular meetings in ten minutes. If you want to go outside and respect. Thank you for your condition, Eric.
Oh, recharge it.
There's a present case, so forgive us for not being able to actually refer to most of the time we have.
County born children's free elders, tonight we're all in it in Pompan湖ton Lake, St. George Drive, and I have an absolute, you know, community.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement that open public meetings will have success under prospective meetings, brought by an identity location included. In the end, the notice adopted the reorganization being followed, and the clear posting administration bill, and mail to two administrators in force with the business of law.
Can you repeat that?
No.
Free elders out there, here, Hartlet, here, Bass, Duffy, here, LaFleur, here, Deputy Director James, here. Director Lozera.
Can we please staff the invocation, grab the levitation, and then you're going to have a moment of silence to remember all the women who have died while serving in the United States armed forces.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the world.
And for those that don't start to remember the laws, I did say we're going to do the invocation, then that, but that's okay. I want to have a moment of silence to remember all the women who have died while serving in the United States armed forces.
Oh, God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love. Be gracious enough so to bless thy servants, our freeholders, in this county of the same that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through all the work. Amen.
Should we do it again? No. We have a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much.
Motion to approve the minutes, two minutes twenty-seven. Make that motion. Thank you. All. Free elders out there, yes, Hartlet, yes, Duffy, yes, LaFleur, Deputy Director James, yes.
I have a motion to approve the progration. Second. By Duffy, second, by Doctor, call.
Free elders out there, yes, Hartlet, yes. Duffy does before, Deputy Director James, yes.
Favor reports, anybody who have anything that they wish to, to all of us to do? Anyone?
Favor reports we have, the technical area is in over resolution.
Thank you, sir. We have no communication there.
No communications.
All right, is that a motion to open the oral portion of the meeting, please? Second. By Bartlett, second, by Doctor.
Free elders out there, yes, Hartlet, yes, Duffy, yes, LaFleur, Deputy Director James, yes.
Members of the public who wish to speak for the last three minutes, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and without either, I'll ask you for the address together, name and address, three minutes of address. Anyone? Yeah.
Thanks, Eric. I'm worried one of us might have to pop this in there. First of all, we can hop right to get by.
Two minutes left.
I'm dead, man. We're a gang of rats coming down Pompan湖ton Lake. Please support your residents and be close on here and after. Get the questions out, ask them, you guys. It shows that parties are a lot of my dad, we're all the same, we're all the same, we all have our place, we're a gang of rats in the St. County. At the end of the day, that's a whole, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Come on.
What would a meeting like without a meeting?
I don't know. State your name.
Oh, yes. How does a gentleman afford to herself, uh, publicly, uh, Chris Cassinelli, William Park? I have nothing to say about this all. I have nothing to say about William Park. But he does have something to say, something I just downloaded today over there. Since the St. County was probably leading the feedback of Morris Canal, we were like, I know I mean this, this is a question that I guess I won't be answered. How does the county administration decide what is going to be open, what projects could be open to public, to public meetings versus not? Because I went to, and Free Holders before we noticed, I went to a number of meetings for, you know, the parks and master plan, et cetera, and it seems that my memory is correct, that before Uncle Tom died and, whatever he was, I don't remember the plan that he forced that now, seeing as all this stuff, that, not in the law meetings, et cetera, read everything, but that is my question. So I was there with the Marshall, the replay project, which is the built bridge over the Pecan River in Little Falls, that gets a public meeting, but the other plans for rifle camp park and perhaps even down mountain, don't get public here. That's the question.
Anyone else? Come on. If you're going to speak, I'm sorry, if you're going to speak this lineup, because otherwise we could state that before we were sure of the meeting, so if you don't mind, we're standing this lineup over there, and we return, I'm sorry, is this your name that you're asking?
I'm afraid it's not, I'm a resident of people who may go, and then I would, first of all, I'd like to thank people who are, who are passionate for the animals and who are, and I just wanted to say that I'm all wrapped in your, in your, in your, and, and so on. And, but number one, complete progration over the, the floor right here, over the dolphin, all the areas, the animals have nowhere to go. So we, on behalf of our members, we are joining the coalition to oppose the development of rifle camp park. Do I have a hand?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Hi, Julie.
Again, if you'll just stand by line, open up if you want, you'll be given your turn. I don't know where my lines are. Excuse me, will you just have some water, please, so we can hear?
Can we have a microphone up here so we can hear back here? If we can hear nothing here.
There is a microphone on the desk.
Can we turn it off? Right here.
We can just maybe ask everyone to.
This is the actual.
Thanks, Mike.
I'm here tonight, I'm half of Ann Casinelli, she couldn't be here. She wanted me to.
Your name and address, please.
My name you want or hers?
And address, your name, your speaker.
Okay. She wanted me to.
Your name and address, please.
Helen Martin.
And address.
39 White Light, I didn't know, I had assigned hers. She wrote this letter and sent it to me because she couldn't be here tonight. It says, "I am sorry that I was unable to attend this meeting, but I would like someone to read this for me." It says, "I recall attending at least two of the meetings, maybe more, over a year ago, in which we pleaded with the freeholders to help us gain some relief with the unkept promises and untruths constantly told to us. We don't know where else to go. We even spoke to the county health department. We told them we had gone to our township council and over and over and received no answers whatsoever. And we told the freeholders that all the town officials do, do is put us, put up smoking mirrors. They always have and try to convince us that DuPont is doing all they can, but all that they may be doing is for nothing, if the source is still contaminated. I distinctly remember the freeholders, Hector, Laura, and Terry Duffy, two of them, promised to do what they could to help us, and they did try. However, once our local officials got wind of their attempt, just as though what happened, they would make it so that the freeholders could not move forward. Mike Simone and Mike Ciara, Mayor Ciara, and maybe others as well, put a petition of the letter together demanding that the freeholders fault for spending any money for further investigations, and the county was told that all they could do was done, and already being done, and there was no need to spend any of the county residents' money to do anymore. Maybe more studies was not the answer, or more lawyers was not the answer, but seeing as we have no answers, we had appreciated something, being something of our township has never believed the importance enough to spend on local money to do for its people." Again, another nail in the coffin. Although when a buyer is interested in buying our town, in, or buying our town in the Plume area, if they happen to send to Ed Merrill, they are given the fluff and that there is no need to concern. I hope it will be nothing to worry about, but this mess is the second time around and we are far away from the cleanup. What is going to happen 10, 20, 30 years from now when, although I hope to God I am wrong, there is more illness and more properties in crisis due to the groundwater vapor contamination that wasn't addressed? Again, freeholders, we take this opportunity not to be children, but to assume that our children, our grandchildren who live in the Plume do not have to grow up and deal with what this present residents have to endure for so many years. What are your administration, why, without our administration washing our backs? Ann Casinelli, thank you. Ann Casonelli, thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? I can hear you. My name is Joseph Huntay, Street Fifteen, House of Terrace in Clifton. Uh, I'm here actually to speak on behalf of the handicapped. Um, I happen to be an EMT and also an adult scout in there. I'm just here really to remind the freeholders how important it is for the handicap of, uh, state and county to have access to the parks. I have to have, I have to have a suggestion. Uh, first, a couple of statistics. Nationwide, thirteen and a half percent of the population, Sandy deaf, state of New Jersey is about twelve percent, Passaic County is about twelve and a half percent. So, it's a lot of people, about fifty-four thousand people could be affected by anything that happens in the park, in Passaic. And my suggestion is that even though we have a public comment, uh, process, it would be really nice to have, uh, an extra push to reach out questionnaires to, uh, people who are disabled, uh, in that community, because we have terrific, uh, resources in this area. Uh, we have University Hospital that's done work for the Olympics. In fact, we have Kessler Institute, uh, which treated, a lot of people will know Christopher Lee as Superman. Uh, and, uh, we have a design community that's getting very active, uh, in the state. They can take ideas, suggestions, home news, handicap, and, and determine to design ideas that will improve the parks. So, that's my suggestion to the freeholders. Thank you very much.
Kurt Schakenberg, two six eight Washington Avenue in Clifton, New Jersey. To the freeholders of Passaic County, I stand before you to ask your mercy and compassion for one of the many properties in your care. Rifle Camp Park is long been a passive sanctuary for anyone seeking a quiet trail to walk in the woods and observe abundant wildlife. The park was designed this way from its beginning. Now you plan to install over this plan a large construction, a professionally designed disc golf course, which will radically transform the park and its relationship with the people who use it. Instead of a passive park, the new park will encourage active sport. Will be designed for tournament play by teams of organized participants. This is contrary to the park's history, original design, and current use of Passaic County residents. Instead of nature trails, Rifle Camp Park will have pads between fairways. Instead of natural areas, will have metal holes, cast concrete tee pads, three pads per hole for different levels of skill, and clear two-hundred-and-fifty-foot fairways. Forty-five hundred feet of fairway between fifteen and forty feet wide, cut into wood for the proposed eighteen holes. Note that the wildlife in the park will not tolerate this new reality. Deer will leave, becoming a new hazard for the neighborhood. The profusion of birds will be reduced. Animals will lose nesting grounds and precious habitat. So too the population of humans will change. Instead of resource for the Passaic County community, this new facility will attract crowds from all around us, from Bergen County, central Jersey, and as the closest tournament level facility, New York City. Popular tournaments might involve closing the park to the public, as has been happening now on weekend mornings in Garrett Mountain Reservation. Where will the humans go who used to use the park? Where is the next stretch of passive parkland in lower Passaic County? You know the answer to this question. There is no longer any passive parkland of any consequence in lower Passaic County. With the installation of this disc golf facility, the extension of urban sprawl into the most intimate spaces of the Passaic County park system in lower Passaic County will be complete. I am here to ask you to reconsider. What is the need, the demand, for a disc golf course? Why must it be placed in such a sensitive area? Is the need to play disc golf so great that it overrides the need to observe any natural areas in lower Passaic County? Are there no other county facilities with enough spare acreage to support a disc golf course? It appears to me there are other parks and facilities that would enthusiastically welcome a disc golf course where it would be in line with the existing landscape and active nature in place. Rifle Camp Park is a special place. Do you reconsiderate your objection? Thank you.
Jefferson LaSalle, thirty-one Orchard Street, Pompton Lakes. Uh, I just, I'm here to speak about Pompton Lakes, but I just want to also reiterate that I greatly appreciate the previous comments, and I completely agree with it. As I stand here, uh, I'm on the board of the Pompton Lakes Residents for Environmental Integrity, and I'm also on the Pompton Lakes Community Advisory Group, a group of residents that works to help inform other residents about the work going on regarding the contamination. As you know, we've approached the freeholders at Freeholders' Meetings in Patterson several times. As I stand here today, one of our home, her husband is greatly ill from cancer, and she lives in the area that is denoted as the Cancer Cluster in New York. I feel like I've been doing this for nine years, and I'm talking to a great board, and I'm here to beg the freeholders to do what they initially promised us to do. I'm in complete agreement with Ann Casonelli's letter that was read to you by Helen Martins. I believe that we have not seen enough done to protect the residents of the town of Pompton Lakes, New Jersey. Simple as that. And we asked for me and Senator Booker, we refused on that. I know you, you tried to help us with that, but we are at a point now where we're not being held at any level, and it is really, the ball is entered for it at this point, but I beg you to please help us. Property taxes are just sky high in this town, they are aiming to go higher. Many homes are in foreclosure, many homes are selling for much lower than their appraised value. And in the meantime, we're still in these houses, we're still breathing in this smoke, regardless of the, of the big communication systems, those are, those are, they need, they help, but they do not eliminate all of the toxins. Um, we need to be able to sit down at a meeting with Senator Booker, with the freeholders. Um, if the Borough Council wants to be there, that's fine, I know that they declined initially on that, but something has to be done. When the flood happened after Hurricane Irene, uh, twenty-seven million dollars was given to buy out those homes. There's precedent in this town to buy out the homes in the town. And that is when Mayor Sinseimer negotiated with the banks, with the mortgage companies, the insurance companies, and the DuPont Corporation, and he got buyouts from every resident that wanted to be bought out along the asset growth in the nineteen-nineties. That should happen here, now. But our Borough Council is not doing that, they are not helping us, they are not addressing it with us, we've been asking for this for almost a decade, and it's adopted. Unfortunately, I have to go teach in Hennorfielding, so I will not be able to hear your response. I will look for it online, and I would hope that your response will extend beyond this meeting, and I'll be talking with you in a later time.
Just like to bring to your attention, in that area we are over the road by asset growth, you're taking care of, what we do is keep patching it up, patching it up, and keep forming parks. And there's also another route, the Turner Drive, Johnson Bridge, which is a real batch pick, but today I noticed a turbo drive, a big wall on the west side of the road, which goes back. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Sorry. I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Angie Matler. I live at Eight Hundred Avenue in Highland Lakes, New Jersey. I am the Executive Director of the Animal Protection League of New Jersey, and I am here today to represent our members of Passaic County. Friends of Garrett Mountain reached out to us about the disc golf course and the dog park proposal for rifle camp, rifle camp park. Um, and the members in particular, Lipton Woodland Park, Clifton, and Little Falls, which surround that park. The Animal Protection League is joining with the Coalition to protect rifle camp park, to keep its remaining natural beauty. Disruption of this park to a disc golf and to a dog park will have unintended consequences, like the gentleman before talking about displaced wildlife, and can create a dangerous condition for residents. One thing I don't like to do is, I don't really like coming before boards and telling you what to do without providing some kind of a solution. I've worked for many years on open space committees, and one thing I've learned on that is that when we try to protect open space, we often find out that the development is in the pipeline for many, many years. There's a wonderful opportunity for you to stop development at its core and protect this park and to keep its natural beauty. And I read the, um, what was it, the stated, um, county park, the stated goals in the county park recreation and, and park plan, not once did I see anything about a disc golf course or a dog park being asked for. Disc golfing is available in nineteen other areas throughout New Jersey, so there's lots of them. I talked to someone last night in Bergen County, says they're all over the place. And most people that I know who have dogs, who live with dogs, including myself, we don't go to dog parks. Um, and in the plan, I also read that majority of the people won't go to rifle camp park because of the hiking trails, because of the natural beauty. Please keep it pristine, please keep it beautiful, please keep it natural. Thank you very much.
Hey, everyone. Uh, freeholders, my name is Joe Inteattola Jr. I'm sure you remember me.
What's your address, please, to put it on record?
It's, uh, thirty-two A Walmart Street, Pompton Lakes, New Jersey, DuPont Village. Um, I appeared before you down in Patterson several times, and, uh, at the last meeting I attended down there, Mr. Duffy was working on contacting EPA, DEP, DuPont, NACMORS, and possibly the mayor to have a meeting and try to resolve issues for residents. Um, it was going back and forth, and then when the election came up in November, apparently we were no longer contacted, and we have no idea what the resolve is of the meeting. But Mr. Duffy did say at the time that the mayor was not interested in meeting, and he was, uh, Mr. Duffy was supposed to be tied to us on EPA, DEP, and, uh, Chemors. Next issue is the Lakeside Bridge that crosses over the lake to, um, Turham Road in Wayne. That's a county bridge, it's approximately four lanes wide. In the center of the bridge, there is a approximately four to six inch drop between an expansion joint. Underneath the bridge, you have, uh, expansion pedestals that sit on top of the concrete foundation. Apparently those collapsed on the one side, and there's a big drop. I think the county engineers should investigate that and repair the bridge, because if the pedestals shift any further, possibly the bridge can drop into the lake, one section of it. Uh, clean up date, um, I don't know if EPA has been telling anybody here on freeholders that they said that they thought that the vapor levels have been reducing and that there's no big issues, but there's a whole new hotspot found in DuPont Village, which is actually three times the magnitude of the original area found on Harbor Drive and Skyler Adenham in Plume. Um, another issue with residents, there's approximately three hundred residents, there's five hundred and forty homes that are contaminated. Three hundred property owners filed suits against DuPont, now Chemors. Approximately two hundred property owners settled using the vapor intrusion tests that were done in two thousand and eight. An engineer in April twenty sixteen that worked for GE confirmed by a second engineer who works also for the US government and the DOD, confirmed that the testing was actually invalid and false upon. So now, these two hundred property owners, according to a judge in Bergen County that I met with and gave information in reference to the tests being invalid, may possibly throw out these subtle cases, and now there might be a lawsuit against Pompton Lakes Town, the county, as well as the polluter for acts of fraud. In the...
Sorry, if you break through this, I'm gonna let you go. There are more sentences.
Sure. Uh, there's a remaining hundred people, property owners in suit, and, uh, in this, we have an issue right now. The lake is being cleaned up by DuPont's contractor. They were given a route to drive through certain roads to stay out of the residential areas. They're apparently not abiding by that, and they're driving through residential areas, including the DuPont Village to take shortcut. As they're driving by the residency, people that are involved in the lawsuit, they're waving, saying hello, so it's basically it's harassment. I approached the mayor, and he claimed that it's an EPA issue. But since there are open cases, uh, I'm putting on the record in front of you that terrible Pompton Lakes may be involved in lawsuit unless these people are stopped. Very easily, the mayor...
Now, now I have to stop you, but like I gave you that for good.
Sure.
I can hear your comments.
Good evening. Al Duwa, of New Jersey. First, I'd like to thank sixty-two Albert Drive. First, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. De Nova and, uh, Mr. Jordan for giving me the information on the rifle camp park. I wasn't aware of every detail of the plan, I was, uh, regarding that this golf course. However, uh, I do attend old parks regularly, and I, I have to say, I think we should consist, think of it as a passive park. Uh, the outline here is, is very well done. Maybe it's needed in this county, but, but maybe there's an alternative area that we can find something else to replace it. Uh, that park is a beautiful park, and I went over the county parks and recreation plan before I came here tonight. So I had the old ones, the two thousand and one plan, and I just have some questions that you can answer maybe later on. In the original plan, two thousand and one, there's a mention on chapter six, page one, of six hundred acres of Garrett Mountain and Rifle Camp, separated by a narrow strip of privately owned land. When you go to another section of the, uh, document, chapter ten, page two, it talks about seven hundred and fifty acres of Garrett Mountain farm and rifle camp road. So when that document, there was two lists of acreage that are wrong, I guess nobody caught it. If we go to the new plan, you go to page eleven, it says Garrett Mountain Reservation is about three hundred and ten acres. If we go to page sixteen, rifle camp is a hundred and sixty-nine. So now we're down to, we're four hundred and seventy-nine acres as compared to what was stated in the old plan of a six hundred or seven fifty. I don't recall ever losing any property, so if someone maybe, if not tonight, in the near future, tell me if there was that many acres years ago and what had happened to it. The other thing, as I was going in and reviewing it, in the back is an area that says, um, regarding waterways, and it says that the, um, reservoir there is not linked to any other waterways that would lead into a major waterway. I, I don't. It's on page twelve, rifle camp park, in your plan. I just asked you to review that, maybe, it says great notch reservoir is located adjacent to the park to the west. This is classified by surface water quality, says it's a freshwater, non-tropical producing waterway. This lake does not appear to be connected to larger stream or river system. I believe, because I was on the Clifton Environmental Commission for many years, I believe that that reservoir is linked somehow to the third river, and the third river does flow into the same river. I know we did a third river study report, when we did that report, we had, in that report, we made the connection. So, you know, you can answer me later, but I just, if there is, if it is connected, maybe we should modify that down the line or amend it. But Anthony, thank you for the information. I, we're speakers here, so I can't say nothing better than that. It's a beautiful park, you, I know your park's in the right place, because you've one of us best, and you answered me the last time knowing that little area about the veterans, so I know, I know you are very familiar with the park, but we don't have enough land in this county, especially down south, so I should rethink. I'd love to come.
Good evening. I'm Vera Lazar, I'm from Clifton, I'm a member of...
What's your address, please?
Oh, twenty-two Spencer Ave, Clifton. I am on the Clifton Environmental Commission and a member of the Friends of Garrett Mountain, and I'm here once again to urge you, our elected officials, to reject the installation of the disc golf course at rifle camp park. The disc golf course, along with the other proposed changes in use for rifle camp park, will degrade the natural environment of this important forest in a way which it may never recover. Rifle Camp Park is one of the last wild and natural open spaces in lower Passaic County, providing critical habitat for numerous species...
providing critical habitat for numerous species of birds and wildlife, providing a chance for urban residents to escape the stress and bustle of the city and connect with the serenity of unspoiled nature. But the disc golf course would change all that, cutting wide swaths through the core of the forest, cutting down over a hundred healthy trees, fragmenting important bird habitat, impacting wetlands and streams, taking quiet nature trails out of use, all for one special interest group. The people of Lower Passaic County are not wanting a disc golf course here. They are wanting trails to walk and to hike amongst nature and that is clear from the survey results from the master plan. At previous meetings, it's been said that the up county parks are for nature and passive recreation. And maybe this comes as a surprise, but the people of Lower Passaic County also want and deserve the same chance for passive recreation. In fact, it's even more vital for those who live in urban areas. I know it's been said at previous meetings also that you need to think of all the residents. And I just wanted to say that this is not about just one small group of bird watchers. This is for all the residents of Passaic County. And therefore I ask you again to reconsider and to reject the installation of the disc golf course at Rifle Camp Park. And before, um, I would just like to say on what Alan mentioned about the reservoir and the connection, the, it is true that the headwaters of the Third River, which is attributed to the Seig River, the headwaters are formed in Rifle Camp Park. And as a matter of fact, one of the, I just noticed that one of the disc golf fairways actually crosses over the headwaters of that, the headwater stream. It also, the disc golf course also, um, comes very close to other wetlands in the park and it follows directly alongside another, a small stream which forms the headwaters of Slippery Rock Brook, which also enters into the Passaic River. The, oh, the other thing I'd like to mention is regarding the dog park. The, uh, I don't know if you are aware, but the dog park, the location, um, of the dog park is being put in an area where it's densely forested and it includes, uh, I think that there would be a much if the county decides, I have nothing against dogs, I love dogs, I have a dog, I don't go to dog parks myself, but if the county did want to put a dog park in one of the parks, um, I don't think that Rifle Camp is the correct location and certainly not this area of dense forest.
Hi, I'm, uh, sixty-nine Alan Dry. I'm in Wayne. I work with a number of different environmental groups. Um, I think the gentleman asked an interesting question. If we've got a hundred sixty-nine acres, we're talking about eighteen, nineteen acres for the golf course, we're talking about a number of acres of deforestation, uh, from the, uh, dog run and who knows what else around the pond and I don't know the last time it's frozen in Passaic County. If that part of Passaic County, they allow that water to freeze open. So I think there's a number of inconsistencies here. I want to ask the, um, freeholders to get back to me on what we're exactly talking about in terms of acreage that's going to be contributing to the deforestation. The way I'm looking at it, once you throw in the parking lots, roadways, and a number of other different non-forest, non-meadow areas, you're talking about a substantial utilization or death of the park. And I'd like you to get back on that because I haven't been able to call the exact numbers here. Um, I'm gratified to see how many groups have come tonight to support that you, that you do not allow this utilization to take place. I think that, um, tonight, maybe the next one, but people do not like this idea and, um, I think you should give back consideration, but please get back to me on the acreage. Thank you.
Thank you. Millie through Seattle, four-four-four Miller Avenue, twenty-four lakes. Thank you all for coming and to be here on the bridge. I just had two questions. On Millen Avenue, we have, uh, Inwood Avenue, which is the county roads, both of them. We have no handicap, but a road destroyed. We have a handicapped person that goes on the street with a hundred trucks a day. One of these days, they're not gonna see us. So they all collapse from all the trucks. The handicapped, uh, sidewalk is higher, slower, and they ju, you cannot go on the sidewalk and go to the handicapped ramp. So I'd like, um, just to check on that case, because I know it's both county roads.
You're not talking about the road, you're talking about the sidewalk?
Well, I'm talking about all four of them, right?
Yeah, but you're talking about sidewalk, you're talking about county road, you're talking about sidewalk.
Right, I'm just mentioning where it is. It sounds worse.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify, you're not talking about the county road, you're talking about a sidewalk.
Right, I think we can, okay. Uh, the other thing, uh, is there any plans to do with the, um, the, uh, let's see, the bar, the county garage? Do you have plans to do with, what to do with that? You selling it, you keeping it? Anybody know, is there any plans on it?
We got traffic.
Oh, sorry. I got used to the mayor bringing it back to the end of the red. Now you guys are bringing it back to the old, okay. All right, uh, so let's, let's really, uh, do this. Let's be cool.
Good evening. I'm George Esmeralda. I'm with the London, two-fourth lane, Patterson, New Jersey. In a city, a beautiful city, since I was so criticized the last time for using other language about the city of Patterson, I recall it a beautiful city tonight. And it is a city that has such little green, open areas as everybody tonight was talking about, that, um, I feel for you. You have made basically a decision about instituting this B course. And it is extremely difficult, not to underestimate how difficult it is to hear all of the opposition to what you have previously felt to be a wise decision. But it is also a sign of great leadership to be able to recognize when there is sufficient opposition to seriously reconsider it. And I ask each one of you to please listen to the folks who come forward and who want to preserve this itsy-bitsy area of Patterson, New Jersey that has virtually no green space left for trails, uh, wildlife, uh, and, and all of nature that is so exquisitely beautiful. I would also like to say that I understand that the director of the Nature Center at Rifle Camp Park has just recently resigned. While I don't know Bill Cuomo personally, I have met and chatted with him a few times. I've attended the Nature Center in Rifle Camp Park. I am extremely sad to learn of his resignation. Bill brought over the seven years that he was there, a wealth of knowledge, information, and ingenuity to the Nature Center. And I would like to publicly take this opportunity to thank Bill Cuomo for his dedication to the Rifle Camp Nature Center on behalf of the numerous children, thousands of children that he has, uh, educated as well as the adults. Bill may be one of the most underappreciated employees in the Passaic County parks, in my opinion, and we will miss him enormously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. Mary Walsh, we met last time. Nobody took the oath on my offer of leading through rifle camp park, but the offer still stands.
Do I hear your name and address, please?
Mary Walsh. I do live in Hackensack, but I'm the conservation co-chair of the North Jersey chapter of the New Jersey Sierra Club. We cover Passaic and Bergen County.
Thank you. Put it right, you can get the address on the record.
I said Hackensack.
Yeah, you did. Your address, man.
Oh, excuse me, more David's at you.
Thank you.
So I did some research on what's involved with, uh, disc golf course, because I'm sure you would like, your, your plan is to do a highly professional job. So the, the Disc Golf Course Association provides descriptions of how these things should go. They say, and I quote, "Fairways should not cross or be too close to public street sidewalks and other areas where non-players congregate." The effect on Rifle Camp Park is that this will eliminate the, you cannot put any fairways near the camping platforms and the viewpoints, all the roads in the park as people walk on the roads, the Nature Center, the red trail, and the yellow trail. The DGA, the Disc Golf Association, also says, "A well-balanced course has a mixture of holes that go completely through the woods, partially through the woods, and mostly in the open." The effect on Rifle Camp Park, if you do the design the way it should be done, is contri, is contrary to the statements of the forester who said that there would be very few trees removed. The DGA also says that typically fairways range from twenty to forty feet wide. Your plan has them as thirty feet wide. This usually, and the DGA says, "This usually means that some larger trees need to be removed to create fair light paths." Again, the effect on Rifle Camp Park, this is contrary to the forester stating that, and I quote, "The trees removed as part of the project would be slated for removal regardless of whether a disc golf course is being installed." That is absolutely untrue. DGA says there should not be too many obstructions within thirty feet of each target. Again, any structures that already exist close to the proposed course have to be removed, which includes trees. If, I don't know how much time, is there a five minute limit?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. I said, I have come to the conclusion that because you have the money, you probably need to put the golf course someplace else.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm Jackie Schramm. I live at four-sixty Indian Road in Wayne, New Jersey. I'm also the director of social justice at St. Mary's in Pompton Lakes. Uh, we have several environmental groups, Francis in response to fracking, advocates for justice, and so are these. Uh, several members in my, uh, Francis response group are involved with this issue and that's how I found out about it. I also taught in Patterson, uh, many years ago, but I know how important Rifle Camp Park is and that's why I'm standing before you. Um, we have fought many issues over the years. I've been, I was a volunteer for fourteen years, working on staff for fifteen years. And, um, in all parts of Passaic County, we have seen the same kind of situation, um, Pinnacle Track in Oakwood and, uh, bordering Wayne, and they say they'll just take so many trees and they'll be this type of, you know, and the story is the same over and over. Uh, you know, we're, we're fighting very hard to preserve what's left of these types of properties and they are so important, they're vital. For all the reasons everybody's mentioned, I would add one more, the health, the health of us, our nation of, we, we really need nature, you know? So I, I, um, you know, Saint Francis, care for creation, uh, Pope Francis, La Dato Si, you know, on the Care for Our Common Home. That's on, I'm speaking on behalf of, um, the voices and the voiceless at Marvay.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Anne Schattenberg, two-six-eight Washington Ave, Clifton, New Jersey. Greetings. Tonight I'm here again to ask you to make a motion to cancel your plan to install a disc golf course at Rifle Camp Park and the order bond state important bird area, national natural landmark. This park should never have been chosen as a site for this project from the get-go. Uh, you should all question the due diligence of the so-called research that was done to determine this as the best location for this venue. Where is it? Who did it? What other parks are considered? Why has this research not been made accessible to the public? Why have no formal public hearings and public notifications been provided? Why is this project important enough to override bypass standard county planning and greenacre statutes governing public notification? I know that Rifle, why Rifle Camp Park is special, it's an order bond important bird area, vital to survival of endangered species, and the last remaining of natural open space available to lower Passaic County residents. So why is disc golf so special to you? Why is it getting special treatment? Among my degrees, I hold one in horticultural therapy, so I'm particularly well-educated on the benefits that access to the natural environment can provide. There's a term for you, nature deficit disorder, a phrase coined by American journalist Richard Blue in his two thousand and five book Last Child in the Woods. It, it means human beings, especially children, are spending less time outdoors resulting in a wide range of behavioral problems. The term serves as a description of the human cause of alienation from the natural world. We need nature, we need Rifle Camp Park to remain a natural haven, provide healing and rest to the residents and children of Lower Passaic County. Don't take this vital amenity away from us. Put sports fields like disc golf fairways elsewhere. Please end this today. Freeholder Apter, Freeholder, um, Freeholder Apter, Freeholder Best, Freeholder James, um, some of you are running for Freeholder, um, Mr. Barlet, Freeholder Barlet, running as a Democrat for Congress. Rifle Camp Park is your proving ground. If you can't stop a disc golf course in a vital order bond, important bird area, in a local park that, that caters to endangered wildlife habitat, how are voters ever going to expect to be effective in stopping important anti-environmental initiatives like environmental contamination, pipelines, oil drains, and the like? I see here, this is great, you guys are great, but Mr. Barlet, uh, Freeholder Barlet, James and Apter, you walked with the nature conservancy in a walkathon for nature conservancy's plant a billion trees initiative. I, I'd love you to plant a billion trees. I'd also love you not to remove the trees from Rifle Camp Park. You say you're a hashtag walk read, hashtag walk read in Rifle Camp Park with us, the residents of Lower Passaic County, who are asking you, stop this disc golf course today. Let this be your legacy. Preserve Rifle Camp Park today. Thank you.
Good evening. My first name is June Maxine Gilbert, sixteen Gordon Road, Pompton Lakes, New Jersey. I've had to follow. I wish I had prepared words for this evening, I do not. All due respect to the mayor and council, um, this is the first time I'm addressing any official, and I want to also at the onset, thank the folks, the Pompton Lakes folks, that spoke to you and passionate about Dupont. I would think the average meeting age in this room this evening, I'm going to be sixty in November. I have a deadly form of cancer. This is not a fashion statement. My treatment will continue, has been going on for the last ten months, will continue until January. My brother passed away quite quickly and many, be careful because this is, I've learned unfortunately, commonplace, esophageal cancer. He was diagnosed and he died in fifteen days. And the reason why I tell you all this, we grew up and moved to Pompton Lakes in nineteen fifty-seven. There wasn't a day that we didn't swim in Hirschfield and there was about three years that we waterskied openly as pre-teens and teens on the lake. So what do I see but Dupont and billions of dollars? Millions, maybe billions. I, my husband and I are behind the times, but now all of a sudden, due to necessity, we're now go try- November. I have a deadly form of cancer, this is not a fashion statement. My treatment will continue, has been gone on for the last 10 months, will continue until January. My brother passed away quite quickly, and you may be careful, because this is, I've learned unfortunately, commonplace, esophageal cancer. He was diagnosed and he died in 15 days. Now, the reason why I tell you all this, we grew up and moved to Pompton Lakes in 1957. There wasn't a day that we didn't swim in Hirschfield, and there was about three years that we waterskied openly as pre-teens and teens on the lake. So what do I see but DuPont and billions, millions, maybe billions? I, my husband and I are behind the times, but now all of a sudden, due to necessity, we're now go trying to catch up, read articles, and find out where we think, where everything is. Now, to no surprise, what did I hear with my Pompton Lakes residents before me, sound off saying, doesn't sound very good, not for you folks at county level, not for you folks at the local level, and not for the state folks. All due respect to endangered, endangered species, we're talking life and death. Okay? Um, this is off the cuff, this is from my heart. Losing my brother at 60 years old was bad enough, I hope I make 60, that's totally not sure, but all of this is because my parents moved to good old Pompton Lakes when I was 10 months old. We, it was a great tailing growing up, but it's now incumbent of every official, local, county, and state to make sure, excuse me, to make sure that this rhetoric is, is done and over with, and that, that people are protected and will listen to. I guess I could go on or whatever, but I'm not going to. Um, it's DuPont. And I do want to say one thing, you know, environmentally, I know there's science behind all this, but I, you know, I lived through the 68 flood, like a handful of us in this room, and you can't tell me that the plume that is now two plumes, or if you talk to somebody else, it's, you know, the portal of Pompton is all of what, three miles square, whatever? With 68 flood, you can't tell me that this stuff didn't rise and deposit elsewhere, and I played on those ball fields, serving my brother. He's not here. And he didn't smoke, esophageal cancer, that was the first thing they said, he never smoked a day in his life. So, like I said, for the, uh, average of age of folks in here, remember my haircut, it's not a fashion statement. Thank you.
Radiohead, 443 Moncler Avenue, Pompton Lakes. Um, I just want to concur with the woman who just spoke. I grew up in the Palm Bay area of Boston, um, Democratic Freeholders, Pompton Lakes Republican Council, we have to work together. You can't play politics on these people's lives in my state. So I just want to agree with everything that she had to say, and the other speakers as far as DuPont is concerned. Um, revaluation, we were told that revaluation was ordered by the counties, is this true? No, the county did not order the Pompton Lakes to.
County Tax Office, the state office, not county. County Tax Board is called County Tax Board, it's the state office, not county.
All right, so that's order by the state, that's definitely just. Thank you. Um, and also I wanted to bring up that Pompton Lakes garage, Millie had talked about it, I was curious about it also, as to the status of that, is that going to be solved, or what is the county going to do with that? Um, there was a woman who spoke for another woman before, is she allowed to speak for herself now, or she's only allowed to speak once? Lastly, I would just like to, is that true?
That's true.
Lastly, I would like to thank the county for lowering my tax bill. I really appreciate that, is there any way that they can work with our council, educate them on how to lower taxes? That would be very helpful.
I've got to answer that. You can't go twice.
Pompton Lakes. Lady, do you have anything to add?
Is there anyone else?
Helen, Helen, would you like to speak?
Yeah.
Then.
We had an opinion, the attorney could be buying here. Back a while ago, asked a question about when do the freeholders have to hold public hearings? Uh, what my office does, the county council office, is we review all the actions of the freeholders, we write all the resolutions. What, there are certain, um, activities of the board that under state law call for public hearings. When that occurs, for example, open space values over $100,000, we tell the board when by law they require all public hearings, and that is when the public hearings are held. I hope that answers that question.
Just so the, uh, the Lincoln Avenue Bridge, I know a couple of, a couple of comments. My engineering department is actually going to be out there tomorrow, so we can take a look at the structural issue that the, that the resident, the trash. We're also looking, it's on our schedule, most of the course said earlier is under design right now, but in the meantime, we're just going to go to that's all on it, and just move it out. The Pompton Lakes Garage, uh, the county is in the process of designing a building, being a facility that houses all of our maintenance, and we're expecting to do it in three separate areas, uh, so we will do that. It's a couple of years away, obviously at the end of the, the project, we'll determine what exactly we'll do with that. Obviously, we'd like to settle and pay the bulk of our, our backs. But again, that project is all the end of design, hopefully we'll have to bid by the end of this year, and it'll be probably at least eight months of construction, we won't move anybody out of the Pompton Lakes Garage. And I think this, all the evidence we.
I think we have a couple of issues here. First of all, following up on Mr. Villalobos' comments about the Pompton Lakes Garage, uh, as he stated, consolidating, uh, the county's facilities, uh, to be able to hold night face, making, uh, the area on, on our cameras lines, and the area, it's really quite a bit of property back there, consolidating operations there. Ultimately, our goal is to put that property, Pompton Lakes Garage, back on the tax levels there, uh, you know, to be an adequate part of the community, and help, you know, to be, uh, directly, that's what we need, that's what we need. There was, uh, some, uh, comments about the reservoir, uh, Rifle Camp, um, that's the, I think, Mr. Villalobos, part of the issue, uh, the back reservoir in Rifle Camp Park, uh, the one on Duke Street, just below Garrett Mountain, and one in Patterson, the line, the reservoir, Ridge Street, all three of those reservoirs, uh, contain treated water that the Second Valley Water Commission, uh, they treat the water and they put it in these opening area of the reservoirs. If you've been following the news, the last year or so, year and a half or so, there's been controversy involving, uh, putting those waters in tanks on property. Most of municipalities are in favor of that, um, we had an issue with it in terms of, because it is next door, county board, um, residents like to stick over the park, put this label on our residents here, and our mayor there, uh, took, uh, took on the fight against the tanks, uh, and coordinated with, um, Addison officials, uh, like the tanks, uh, that's what that is. But those waters don't come from any river area, the only, the only untreated water that goes into those reservoirs is any blocking, uh, we call it runoff, a rainstorm, uh, if the area is swollen around it, I go in there, but it's all river feeding that, and it's just going, it's just going, as part of the Second Valley Water Commission operations, again, treated water, so, we're looking for that. In terms of, there's some question, I think Mr. Villalobos also raised the issue.
Yeah, that's an interesting point you brought up about, you know, the acreage, the, one number in this case, and another one in that case. I would suspect, speculating here, that a lot of that has to do with the development that went on through the years, uh, before I came along, uh, I mean, someone here, President Garrett, I guess, um, that was part of Garrett Mountain at one time, I suspect, well before those units were built there, there are homes along the Clifton border there, uh, that I suspect were part of the Garrett Mountain reservation at one time. Again, speculating, but as areas being developed, and I think another resident talked about stopping development, um, as areas were developed, the acreage, open spaces come back, that's why it's so important, uh, that we try, this field is a word, those in my tender, uh, we have tried to protect as much open space as we can. Those who are familiar with Kim Farm, Wayne, my folks, which was there, uh, we want to own the rights there, uh, because we felt it's important to stay a farm, uh, had we not done that, that entire area would have fallen, not only have lost precious farm there, but we have had more development in an area that's already oversold by the. So these are some of the things, um, that you spoke for a lot, uh, I have some sort of knowledge of it, and I'll let you answer your questions. Thank you. That's a great question.
I know, good to, I'm sorry, I'm a little more, uh, in terms of, uh, but engineering is here, if you go out and take a look at, like, Andy Caprants on, that was Greenwood, or what?
Brother.
Brother, do you take a look at those?
Yeah, um, problematic.
Good answer. You take a look at it, or you'll get back to me, that's the message.
That's the answer.
Thanks.
That's the correct answer.
I'm, I'm, if you go back over any, it's already been covered, but, uh, Mr. Dunphy, you had a question about, uh, accessibility of parks for people with disabilities. Um, I know that a lot of the improvements we've made in Palm Bay Park, we, uh, park owners have taken without any consideration, I know that the new park that we're developing in Passaic in, the mayor's area is going to have, uh, you know, other things, playground equipment is accessible for kids with various types of disabilities, including not only, uh, you know, motor disabilities and getting around, but also, uh, kids on the autism spectrum. Uh, and that's something that a number of the freeholders up here have worked on in various respects, really making, uh, the pool of Passaic County tax available to, um, especially looking for teams and, uh, kids with autism to learn, uh, water safety, um, that's definitely a concern, and I appreciate that.
Does the playground equipment of this park, uh, accessible? Can I get a?
Oh, it's a portionary.
And also, on tonight's agenda, is the approval of plans to spec for the Garrett Mountain Phase One, uh, which includes the path that was there to be free on, um, and to have accessible.
All right. All right, so, uh, okay, you want, you know, okay, requires a very low, so much resolution, what less do you want, now, by the Department of Construction Corporation, for the construction of a solid shore building, the temporary rest of the association, the, uh, yes, the one's a, well, that's the actual, uh, three, uh, resolutions, and I would, I would. I will give the second.
Freeholders out there, yes, Bartley, yes, Dunphy, yes, Ward, yes, Deputy Director James, yes.
All right, we have, uh, two lake stores, we have, uh, we have, uh, two council, two movement, eighteen, all right, we'll work the motion, and we also.
It's on now.
No, no.
Yeah, fourteen, that's, that's, well, I've got this, like, only fourteen, amending, nineteen, we're adding, so I would recommend, say, we, we, if I'm, if I'm.
Second.
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 Freeholders out there, yes, Bartley, yes, Dunphy, yes, Ward, yes, Deputy Director James, yes.
Move the person, help get.
Second.
On the second, for that, Bartley, out there.
Freeholders out there, yes, Bartley, yes, Dunphy, yes, Ward, yes, Deputy Director James, yes.
Build the ocean.
Or then. Freeholders out there, yes, Bartley, yes, Dunphy, yes, Ward, yes, Deputy Director James, yes.
Move the.
Page to paper.
No, no, no.
We, 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 we,